Good evening. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thanks, Mike.
Selectman Chicalini, would you please lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would first like to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I'd like to welcome our town manager, Mr. Scott Crabtree.
Good evening.
Our clerk, Meredith.
Meredith.
Thank you, Meredith. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience and those watching at home, please note that this meeting, as well as all of our public meetings, are being recorded. If during this meeting you do get up and you do speak, if you could please sign in, there's a sign-in sheet. It's important for us to keep accurate records of who came up and who spoke before the board. So, thank you for that. The first item on the agenda is the 2024 State Presidential Election Warrant to be signed by the Board of Selectmen. Ellen Chenner, our town clerk, is not here this evening, but the vote is simply to sign, for the Board of Selectmen to sign, the 2024 State Presidential Election Warrant.
I'll make that in the form of the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda under correspondence is Wendy Hatch. She is our Sargas Finance Director and Treasurer Collector. And the vote is to approve the issuance and detail of a loan from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for loan number CW-23-47 and sign the related interim loan note closing documents. Mrs. Hatch, would you please come to the podium? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Yes, this evening, I am before the Board asking for the approval of a 0% interest loan through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for a sewer rehabilitation project, abatement of sewer inflow and infiltration in the area of town that's identified as Subsystem 3A. That subsystem is generally bound by Route 1 at Walmart to the north, Route 1 by the middle school, high school complex to the south, Forest Street to the west, and Vine Street to the east. The construction project includes rehabilitation of pipelines, manholes, and services necessary to eliminate inflow and infiltration from the system. Approximately 16,500 linear feet of 8-inch and 5,550 feet of 10-inch pipe has been identified in need of cured and placed pipelining to assist in the elimination of inflow and infiltration. Included in the project will also be the installation of a lining system to improve quality of service at mainline connections, of which they have identified approximately 410 of those. Additionally, there are 174 manholes that have been identified as in need of additional rehabilitation using the latest standards of the industry. I have the vote attached. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. I will note that in Section 1 of the vote, it is asking you to vote bonds not in aggregate of an amount that is different from the actual loan that's being issued through the Mass Clean Water Trust. That is because when the DPW with their engineers submitted the application to the Mass Clean Water Trust, they had to provide an estimate of what the project cost was going to be. So, that application was for $3,453,789. So, the amount that you're being asked to approve tonight is $2,956,784. That's what bids have come in at, at this point. So, should there be any additional cost or change orders, it allows us to increase the amount of the loan without coming back to you for a further vote, but puts a limit or a cap on the amount that we can borrow. And that was the amount that the Mass Clean Water Trust approved of $3.4 million. So, I just wanted to make that clear before you read through and you see a different So, again, if there's any questions that I can answer.
Thank you. I think it's important that we stay proactive and keep up with our infrastructure in town. I thank you for coming before us this evening. Do board members have any questions for Mrs. Hatch this evening?
No.
With that said, the vote is on page 2 and 3 of your packet. Would somebody please make a motion? Selectman Chicalini.
I don't want to read it.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. Voted that the town shall issue a bond of bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,453,789. The bonds pursuant to Chapters 29(c) and 44 of the general laws and votes of the town passing May 16, 2016, Article 19, May 16, 2022, Article 8, and May 1, 2023, Article 8, for planning and construction of sewers and other water pollution control abatement infrastructure of the project. Two, that the terms of the financing agreement or agreements between the town and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, the financing agreement, and the project regulatory agreement or agreements between the town and the Department of Environmental Protection of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, DEP, the project regulatory agreement, each relating to the notes in the bonds are hereby approved. That in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes, the notes, from time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,453,789. That each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the trust at a price determined pursuant to the financing agreement. That the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturities of each bond and note, and to execute a financing agreement with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes. Such date, form, and maturities and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by the majority of the Board of Selectmen and the treasurer are evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes. That any certificates or documents relating to each bond and notes collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by electronic submission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original. Signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. That all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer and hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed, and that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials are each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution and delivery of the financing agreement and the project regulatory agreement relating to the project.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Selectman Chicalini, for reading that. The next item on the agenda is recognition of Sargas' 2024 District 16 Softball Little League All-Star Championship Teams. I'd like to bring them in to be recognized and give them certificates from the Board of Selectmen at a time to be decided upon when we're able to call the coaches and be able to coordinate that. I think, Selectman Chicalini, you made the motion last year.
Yes, Madam Chair. So, I actually had spoken to Ms. Strout, and last year we brought them in. And I had mentioned that this should, you know, if they continue with their successes, they should just reach out and we'll accommodate. So, this year, I'm pleased that we have two teams. U-12, once again, they won the district championship, and then they have another, a second team as well. So, depending on what our schedule looks like, I'd like us to coordinate with the both teams to bring them in and, once again, recognize them with citations from the Board.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And the last piece of correspondence is a letter from the Council on Aging. And we received a letter. It's dated September 27. It is signed by the Chairman Ralph. Ralph is actually in the audience. I spoke to him prior to the meeting, and Ralph would like to come up and address the Board. So, if you would, please. I'll just read the first paragraph as Ralph is walking up. "We, the Board of Directors of the Sargas Senior Center, are writing to express some very serious safety concerns about the traffic situation on the portion of Central Street where our building is located at 466 Central Street. We are therefore respectfully requesting a traffic evaluation/study with regard to the four-way intersection that exists at the egress of our parking lot, as well as the traffic flow, dash speed on Central Street in both directions." I just want to also mention that I did speak with the town manager today. We reviewed the letter, and the town manager would like the Board to, as a motion, to refer it back to the manager for further review. So, with that said, if you could please give your name and address for the record, please.
Ralph Genzoli. I'm the Chairman of the Board of the Council on Aging, 46 Crescent Ave., Sargas, Mass.
Thank you.
I want to, first of all, thank you for considering our letter. We're just concerned of the safety of the elderly individuals that are now attending the Senior Center. We have increased many of our programs due to Laurie Davis and her staff, and we have a large influx of elderly individuals coming to the center, much more than we've ever had. And we've had a couple of accidents right outside the center, and we've had a lot of near misses. We contend with every day, obviously, the traffic from the Veteran School, both morning and afternoon. And then during the day, the traffic at Central Street, as we all know, is very heavy, and we have a lot of speeding, to be honest with you. And so, we would ask that perhaps we could have some type of study or something done to, for maybe additional signage or something that would help with the traffic, so people will know that the Senior Center is there. That's all I have. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming. So, with that said, is there any more discussion before we make? Did you want to say something, Mr. Town Manager?
No. Well, I could say that through you, Madam Chairman, thank you for coming down. We'll, I think we can take a look at it and, at least in the immediate, have, you know, some more patrol that's directed there to try to maybe slow some of the traffic down. You know, and we can look at signage and other ways to make it a little safer. You know, clearly, it's more traffic everywhere. I think, unfortunately, the way the driving is now, people, it's just a culture thing now. Nobody stops at stop signs. It's so much traffic, people are just trying to cut into traffic rather than somebody letting you go. And it's just, I think, a challenge all over the place. But particularly here, you know, we could take a look at that and try to come up with some ideas, at least to maybe try to have some more traffic calming, more signage and the police there, and take a look if there's anything we can do to try to make it a little bit safer and slow it down. It's like a hill there that inclines, you know, declines, and, you know, it's sort of like when you're coming out of Dudley, it's, you know, very difficult to get onto Lincoln Ave. It's a little difficult there as well. So, we'll take a look at it and try to get some ideas with the police and signage and bring somebody in maybe to take a look at it. So, thank you. And thank you for coming down and letting us know about that.
Selectman Serino.
Madam Chairman, yeah, my mother got hit in front of the Senior Center about 15 years ago. She was coming up Central Street, heading towards Lincoln Ave. Someone was coming out of the Senior Center, trying to cross over to School Street and hit the back of her car and drove her up over the sidewalk. So, maybe we might, what come to my mind, I don't know if it's, you know, a good idea or not, that'll be up to the Police Department, but maybe instead of having, change the exit and entrances to the Senior Center, maybe enter where the exit sign is at School Street, so they won't have the ability to try to come out and cross over to School Street. That might be a solution. But that's just an idea.
I did look at it today. You know, the, you know, that's not a bad idea. The problem is that there's so many people who have such a habit of going in the way it is now. You could have, like, it could become a whole other sort of issue of going in and out the same direction. But we, you know, I looked at it today, and we can try to, you know, come up with some ideas with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, would somebody please make a motion to refer this to the Town Manager?
Selectman Chair.
Thank you. And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you for coming. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Ralph.
It is now time for our first citizen's comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak before the Board? If you could just come to the podium and give your name and address for the record? And if you could bring the microphone, too, down a little closer to you, that would be
So, actually, I'm here because, and everybody knows, I'm sure, that I'm the one that complains about the trucks coming down Dudley Street.
Could you name an address, please?
I think you're covering the part of the mic. If you could just pick that part up a little bit more so we can hear you.
Like this?
Thank you.
Yeah? Yeah? Is that all right?
Keep it right to your mouth.
There you go.
Oh, okay. All right. Virginia Olivero, 65 Dudley Street. Well, anyway, to get back to why I'm here, it's because of the trucks. I've been complaining about those for a while. I've spoke to everybody on the Board, and, except for the manager, I don't think he talks to people really too much. But anyway, so, yeah, so I don't know if anybody have any answers for me or if I should just go on with my complaints. No answers?
Go right ahead.
Okay.
You're at the right place. These are the Traffic Commissioners right here.
Okay. All right. But anyway, so, like I said, this started a few months ago with those monster trucks coming down my street, the tractor trailers. And they come barreling down, and, okay, and believe it or not, they can come down four in an hour. Not many, and it's all day long. And now, now, but the double-yellow lines down the street, they're coming down. We pedestrians have to be on either one side or the other, but they can come barreling down the middle of the road with the yellow lines, and nobody cares.
Keep that up to your mouth. Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's another thing. I mean, it's an inconvenience, really, to have these trucks coming down. They make a lot of dust, and, let's see, it's really unhealthy. Oh, well, first of all, when I started this, I did go to the Selectmen, and they asked me if I went to the police. And I said, no, but I will. Well, I went to the police, and they said to me, have you been to the Selectmen? Because they're the Traffic Commission, and that's where you're supposed to be going. That got me nowhere. Selectmen, let's see, what else do I have to say here? Yeah. Oh, and I was coming through Cliftondale one day, and I was going home, and to my left, going the opposite direction, two of the trucks, one in front of the other, a third one behind me. I mean, to me, that's so unacceptable, just for them to be, just for them to be in town. It really makes me so angry.
And, Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, so, what we, one of the things that we have done, because we had talked about this at a previous Selectmen's meeting, and I think Selectman Riley and others brought up about having a speed radar stationed every down there because of the speed. And we did do that, and I think the police have, are continuing to do that. We're also, I think there's some background noise. So, we also have, we got complaints of, like, revving the engines and the Jake brakes and all that in the trucks. So, we've had the police doing some random checks down there to try to alleviate some of that that's going on with the trucks. That's what we've done so far, and I think the police are putting together a report on the speeding, at least on that, for all the vehicles, including the trucks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Selectman Chicalini.
So, we have spoken many times. I'm Selectman Chicalini.
Yes, I know you are. And I've spoken with you many times. And I spoke with Corrine.
Yeah. And I think you might have spoken to all of us, but...
Yes.
It's not, it's not that we don't want to help. What I tried to explain to you is, the rules, and it's hard, we can't break the rules to accommodate the people on Dudley Street. So, we can't say, we can't say that we're not going to allow trucks, heavy trucks, to be on that road, because then you have to provide an alternate route. So, I explained to you, they probably don't come up Ballard Street, because taking a left on Lincoln Ave., they would hit, there's that rotary there, and it makes it hard for them to turn. So, I said, if you can track the names of the trucks, we do have agreements with certain applicants, like Trumount, Baden-Trumount, or Aggregate, that where they...
New name now.
Yeah, new name now, right? But we have agreements that their trucks will not utilize our, those side streets within the town. And we have had certain trucks have been cited because they're in violation of that agreement. But the general public trucks that are traveling down that road, the police don't have the authority to pull them over. I mean, if they're speeding, yes, if they're doing something illegal. But that road is an open, passable road, and I spoke with the Police Department. I know from my years on the Board, we can't just say, okay, this, this street is no longer going to be utilized for trucking. That's not even allowed, because we would have to provide an alternate route. And I don't know what that alternate route would be.
I think they do it for convenience. Is that why they're coming down our street, for convenience?
Well, they're probably, they're probably using ways, they're probably using ways. So, they're probably using their GPS to do the fastest route, because these trucks get paid by how many times they dump. You know, they get paid by the load.
Mr. Chicalini, I don't care.
I know you don't, but, I mean, I've spent...
I don't care. I don't think any of you would want to have those trucks coming down your street five, six, an hour, all day long.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's...
And you know what? They start at 6:30 in the morning sometimes. If we went to mow our lawn before 8 o'clock, we would hear about it. They come down 6:30. It's totally unacceptable. I can't buy it. I really, I really can't buy it.
I understand.
I think what, Miss, I think what Selectman Chicalini is trying to say is that if they don't go down Dudley Street, then perhaps they'd go down Ballard Street. So, they're going to go down, maybe Eastern Ave., but we cannot prevent the trucks from going down Dudley Street. At one point, when you and I spoke, there was some work being done at the end of your street, and we saw additional trucking there. I spoke with the building inspector. He said, that is not what's happening now. And I do know that Selectman Serino did some work, too, and to try to count the number of trucks that were going down there, to see if any of them were going to Aggregate. I don't know if you want to speak to that or not. But, but we did have people come down from your street a couple of meetings ago, and that's when we set up the speed monitor and the extra police enforcement to ensure that they're not speeding. So, we're, I get it. We're very empathetic, because nobody wants trucks, of course, speeding. We hear what you're saying. But I think that these, the steps that we have, that Town Manager explained, are, at least is a good first step in trying to alleviate the issue that you're experiencing each day.
And you know something? I forgot about the, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. I didn't...
Selectman Serino, I'd really like, he really, I think, went over and above trying to count the number of trucks going down Dudley Street. So, I'd like him to speak to that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, Virginia, I know we spoke a couple of years ago about the truck, and I did call Aggregate, because we have an agreement with Aggregate, that any of their trucks come from their plant in Swanskit, delivering fill to our, to their plant, our plant in Sargas, they would have to use Walnut Street. And I know a couple of years ago, you would call me, and I get a, names of a few trucks, and I spoke to the environmental guy there, and they kind of straightened the problem out. But you're right, over the last year now, it seems to be, traffic has been coming back. The neighborhood was here about a month ago, and they gave me a list of about, the Board, a list of about eight trucks. I had four of my own trucks, and I talked to Josh over there at Aggregate. But he got back to me, he said that the lists that the neighbors gave them weren't their trucks going to their...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that one.
The lists that the neighborhood had given us about a month ago, they said they, they weren't their trucks going to their plant. But I know we're trying to enforce it now. There's solutions, but I don't know if they'll be acceptable to the whole neighborhood. I mean, we can have, we can go for no trucking on Dudley Street, or we can go for a one-way, maybe on Dudley Street, but then you're pushing the problem over to Ballard Street. What I would suggest, and the manager's doing what he can do with the Police Department, but what I would suggest, is you really, to do anything like that, I would talk to your five Town Meet members in the precinct and get their feelings on doing stuff like one-way or no trucking on Dudley, because you will push the problem over to Ballard Street. I don't know how they're going to feel about it.
None of that is acceptable to me. None of that is acceptable to me.
I would, I would, I would tell you to talk to your five Town Meet members in Precinct 10 and see what they think.
Did you say that a couple of years ago, we talked about the trucks?
Yeah.
Who did?
You and I, you had called me.
Not me. Not me. I'm telling you, this just started months ago with these trucks.
There was an issue, there was an issue a couple of years ago, but it was resolved. It was Aggregate trucks. But you're right, this issue here started about a year ago again, six months ago.
Now, I forgot to mention about these big, orange dump trucks that are now coming down our street, along with the tractor trailers. They're carrying dirt, or they're carrying sand, and it comes into the house, let me tell you. It comes into the house.
Yeah, that's Genzoli Company, begins with a G-I-S-L-I-N-I.
Gudres, Gudres.
Genzoli Company. He has tractor-trailer trucks, and he also has dump trucks. I noticed a tractor-trailer truck, I was in Cliftondale at Dunkin' Donuts today, and I noticed a tractor-trailer truck, his tractor-trailer truck coming through Cliftondale, but he had a load on it. So, I don't, I don't know if he had asphalt in the back of it, delivering asphalt somewhere, but I know, I know it wasn't a truck that came from Swanskit to Sargas to fill, but...
And coming through Cliftondale...
I've seen his trucks around.
Coming through Cliftondale, that small square, these monsters. I can't believe you people allow it.
I agree with you 100%.
I'm sorry, I just can't believe it. It's just horrible. It's horrible.
We thank you for coming before us today.
I know, my three minutes is up, thank you.
We have taken some steps to try to alleviate the issue. I want to thank the Board members, because I know that they've, they've spent a great deal of time, each one of them, going down Dudley Street and trying to really understand the issue, because, like I said, you have talked with all of us. We did have somebody like Selectman Serino say coming about a month ago, and we've tried to put things in place to try to alleviate the issue. So, thank you for coming tonight.
And talk to your Town Meet members, Virginia.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the Board this evening? Seeing none, it's now time for our first public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Sargas Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of family AP Corp., 44 Broadway, Sargas, Mass., doing business as tribute Mexican Kitchen and Bar for Carmen Vichus license and entertainment license to operate as tribute Mexican Kitchen and Bar, 44 Broadway, Sargas, Mass., 01906, Paul Melgu, 271 Reservoir Avenue, Revia, Mass., and Abner Gonzalez, 614 Tremont Street, Number 2, Boston, Mass., owners and Paul Melgu, manager. This hearing will be held in the Sargas Town Hall Auditorium, 2nd floor, 298 Central Street, Mass., on October 17, 2024, at 7:05 p.m. Good evening. Could you please give us your name and address, please? Could you please give us your name and address, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Patrick McDonald.
Could you please pick that mic up a little more, please? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Patrick McDonald. I maintain law offices at 479 Eastern Avenue in Malden, and I have been asked tonight to represent the petitioners on this matter, as well as the other matter related to them, the liquor license matter, AP Family Corp., which hopes to do business here in Saugus as Tribu Mexican Kitchen and Bar, and its principals, Mr. Paul Mongu and Mr. Abner Gonzalez. These individuals are restaurateurs who are hoping to operate a new restaurant at the site at 44 Broadway here in Saugus, Route One North. My understanding, that's the former location of the restaurant known as Oye's, or Oyes?
Oyes.
Oyes, okay. And was prior to that, for many years, the establishment known as Donatello's. But it's also my understanding that it's been closed for a couple of years at this point in time. So they're hoping to reestablish that as a, as a restaurant location here in town. They are, as I said, currently restaurateurs. They own an establishment in Somerville on Washington Street, which is known as Tulum Mexican Cuisine. They have been operating that establishment for this year, calendar year 2024, opening up in January, and continuing in business until today. That is a dine-in, full-service restaurant, a licensed establishment, has an all-alcohol restaurant license, and they're looking to expand and become restaurateurs here in the city. They understand that with respect to a common victual's license, obviously, if granted, they would need to meet all the requirements and regulations associated with the operation of a restaurant, as promulgated by the town and the Board of Health, and so forth. I want to be candid with the board, although they appreciate that the board has taken up the common victual license first, as a practical matter, even if that is granted. They're very much more interested in the more substantive issue, which is the liquor license application, which will follow that. I understand the board assigns these at their discretion, and as I said, they would appreciate very much the grant of the CV license, but I want to be candid with the board, that the CV license is not of much use to them if they don't also receive the liquor license, because most likely, they will not go forward with the project and open up a restaurant of that size, if they also don't have the ability to sell liquor with, with the food. But since it was scheduled first, we ask that the board act favorably on their common victual license application. But again, for purposes of candor, we'd like the board to know that, from their perspective, the more important hearing tonight is the liquor license hearing, because they probably won't go forward if they don't get a liquor license at that location.
And that's fine. The process is that we don't give out liquor licenses without a location.
Right.
So we need to get, grant the common vic, and then we put the entertainment, we combine those, and then in the separate hearing, we'll do the liquor license transfer.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Could, so I'm reading through your materials now. It looks like you're looking for 212 seats?
That's currently configured, it's a 212-seat establishment, yes.
Okay, and can we just review the hours of operation again, please?
Sure. Gentlemen, what are your proposed hours of operation? If you do go forward, get the liquor license, and were to open the restaurant up, and identify yourself for the board, please.
My name is Abner Gonzalez. My address is 614 Tremont Street, Boston, Massachusetts. Yeah, so the hour operations is 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
Is that seven days a week?
Yes, seven days a week.
So that's seven days a week.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Not 1:00 AM, only from Thursday to Sunday. So 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Thursday to Sunday, and from Monday to Thursday, 11 to 11.
11 to 11?
Yes.
Okay. So, my, my only concern, looking at this, you're looking for four televisions?
Yes.
You're looking for a DJ with pre-recorded music, a singer with one music, karaoke, and a live band?
Yes.
So I'm not sure, are you looking for this entertainment to go all the way to 1:00? Because there's a neighborhood in back of you, I don't know how loud this is going to be with a live band, and what you're actually going to be doing?
There is pretty much woods behind us. There's no one behind us. Is that what you were asking?
There is a neighborhood up there. I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how, how the music will travel. I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
I don't think it will travel. It's a pretty uphill, a woods, there's trees. It's very hard to see a house back there.
So you were looking for the entertainment to go to 1:00?
Yes.
Even on Sunday?
Yes.
Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
Just as a comment to the board, when Donatello was there, they, they had entertainment. When Oye was there, they had a DJ that played until 1:00 in the morning. This place has been a liquor establishment with entertainment for the past 30 years. I don't recall, I've been on the board 16 years, I don't ever recall a complaint from the neighborhood pertaining to entertainment at that location, and I, for one, would have no issue with it. I, I know the building is a good, solid building, I don't think you can hear the sound outside. Now, if, if the board were to grant something, and then there was a problem with the neighbors that they could hear noise, we could always bring you in and modify your hours of operation. But just as someone who's a former restaurateur, and someone who's been in the entertainment business in this town for a long time, I don't think that's a problem location. So, that's just my opinion.
Madam Chair.
I think Selectman Chicalini was first.
That's okay.
Okay, Selectman Serino.
Just a quick question to the applicant. There's going to be no dancing there, right?
No, no dancing.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Selectman Chicalini.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If you're going to have a DJ and a band, don't, don't say no dancing, people are going to get up and dance. So I honestly would tell us what you're going to, people are going to get up and dance, so. And dancing is not a problem, this isn't Footloose. People can dance in Saugus, so if you're going to have dancing, just say it.
Well, the idea is in the future. We, right now, we don't know how, we're just opening, so we don't know how it's going to be. Right now, we just want to get people in, but as, what we talked to before is that we'll come back to you guys and ask for dancing if, if that's-
I, in all honesty, they dance at the Continental, they dance at Rosaria, people dance, so ask for it.
And they danced at Oye's.
And they danced at Oye's. So just ask for it. And when you ask for, you only want till 11:00 PM on Wednesday night, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, it's the busiest night of the year, it's a Wednesday. So if you're going to ask for 11, there's no problem in asking till 1:00. You're never going to be open till 1:00 on a Wednesday night, other than the night before Thanksgiving. Just ask for it.
I just don't know, because like, in Somerville, for example, when we were opening a restaurant, they told us that, the hours you have is the hours you have to open. So I don't know.
Correct, but even, even Donatello and Oye were open till 1:00 AM, the night before Thanksgiving, like every other place, that's a tonight, you capitalize. If New Year's Eve fell on a Wednesday or a Tuesday night, you'd want to open.
Yes.
So whether you have the, you're never going to open till 1:00 every night of the week, but if those holidays happen to fall on that night, should be able to open.
Yeah, we would, we would like to have every day, but we're not planning on opening every day, so like-
I, I totally understand.
Yeah, I like it.
So it'd be the exception and not the rule.
Yes.
When do you, if, if the licenses are granted this evening, when do you plan to open? What would be your best-case scenario?
So, we're trying to open by December, mid-December, if we could. Obviously, in Somerville started, in Somerville, we started with our liquor license, we had only food for three months. If this is the case, we would open like that as well, because we really can't afford to have a place close this size without even selling food. You know, so we'll probably just start selling food and wait until we get approved for our liquor license, because rent is pretty high away. So we really need to open.
Madam Chair, I just have a question. The name, where does the name originate from? Because it seems like it's a French-
No, the name in Spanish is tribu. Tribu is like a tribe. It's like a group of people, you know, like ancient times.
Okay. Nice.
Selectman Chicalini.
Interesting, because I was thinking the same, on the same lines that when Selectman Chicalini mentioned about Wednesdays, because on their application, they asked for seven days anyway. I was going to suggest, maybe considering doing the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then just Tuesdays and Wednes, I mean Mondays and Tuesdays, go till 11:00, but make the remaining days till 1:00. And, you know, as a courtesy, if there's any questions or concerns noise-wise, it doesn't hurt to just turn, turn the music down a little bit if, if there is any future issues, or if someone comes to you.
Of course.
Without it escalating to police or coming in before us, you can easily accommodate. We've had, we've had other restaurateurs do that, and accommodate the neighbors. I know there's not a huge neighborhood, I do believe Selectman Panetta is correct, up there, there is some houses up behind there, but there's a way for that noise to has to travel to get up there. But you'd be surprised, especially on a Sunday, you know, you might want to scale the noise back a little bit, after it gets, you know, beyond, say, 11:00 or something like that. I think that would be reasonable. But we want to, we want to equip you with whatever we can to make it successful. You know, the goal isn't to have you open and close, the goal is to have you open and stay open, you know, and, and be successful. So we want to try to be as accommodating as we can.
Okay, thank you.
I think where I was coming from, because I know that area pretty well, but I don't think anyone has a problem with, you know, karaoke's typically not that loud. When you say live band, it could be anything. So you have a five-piece band, and they're banging, you're going to hear it. I hear things from the cow loon that are outside, I hear things from the, noise travels, that's my concern.
Okay.
So maybe on Sundays, you could do something, you know, you're solo singer with an instrument, you could do something a little bit that's softer and not as, as loud. Do board members have any questions before I open up to the public? Selectman Riley.
I just wanted clarification, because on the application, it says four TVs, but then on the restrictions, it says two, and a limited to two televisions, and once a week, live band or live music. What, what are you actually looking for?
Well, they're looking to modify what's already here.
I couldn't hear the question real well.
This is what Oye's had. They want to, they want to modify, add two more TVs, and expand the, what's available for entertainment.
Okay, I thought it was the other way around. All right, thanks.
No, I always ask for Meredith to put a copy of what the, the prior license was, so that we're able to take a look at, to see what was offered before, and what they're offering now, so that we can compare and contrast.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So no other comments from board members? With that said, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Yes, I'm looking at you, because you're the last two people that are sitting here. No? Okay. All right, with that said, would somebody please make a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Chicalini.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we grant the request of Family AP Corp., 44 Broadway, Saugus, Mass., doing business as Tribu Mexican Kitchen and Bar, for their common victual's license and entertainment license to operate Tribu Mexican Kitchen and Bar at 44 Broadway, Saugus, Mass., 01906. This would have Paul Mongu, 271 Reservoir Ave, Revere, and Abner Gonzalez, 614 Tremont Street, Number Two in Boston, as owners, and Mr. Mongu would be the manager. The hours of operation will be for Mondays and Tuesdays from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Wednesday through Sunday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. The total seating that, the total seating capacity will be 212 total, which is slightly different from the existing, which I believe was at 220, 220 seats maximum, so now we're going to 212. And, trying to think, there were no, there was nothing recommended from inspectional services or any of the other recommendations, right?
No, just, just the standard walkthroughs.
Standard walkthroughs and all of, all of that. As far as the entertainment license goes, we would obviously be approving four televisions, as opposed to two previously on the prior, prior contract. And then, on top of that, there would be permitted for karaoke, a live band, a DJ with pre-recorded music, and a singer with one, one instrument. That's it, Madam Chair.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. So you could stay standing there, because now we have your next public hearing, then I will read into the record. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the transfer of an all-alcoholic liquor license from 44 Broadway Restaurant Group Inc., doing business as Oye's Restaurant and Bar, 44 Broadway, Saugus, Mass., to Family AP Corp., doing business as Tribu Mexican Kitchen and Bar, Paul Mongu and Abner Gonzalez, new owners. Paul Mongu, 271 Reservoir Ave, Revere, Mass., and Abner Gonzalez, 614 Tremont Street, Number Two, Boston, Mass., owners and Paul Mongu, manager. This hearing will be held in the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium, second floor, 298 Central Street, Saugus, Mass., on October 17, 2024, at 7:10 PM. Good evening.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick McDonald, attorney for the petitioner, offices at 479 Eastern Avenue in Malden. This is a petition for a transfer of the existing license at the 44 Broadway location, formerly Oye's, and prior to that, Donatello's, but most recently vacant for several years. I believe that license remains held of record by the owner of the property, and he is seeking to transfer it to this applicant. The applicant is Family AP Corp., which hopes to do business at that location again as Tribu Mexican Kitchen and Bar. That is a Massachusetts corporation formed by these two individuals, Mr. Paul Mongu and Mr. Abner Gonzalez. They are together, they together hold all the statutorily required offices in the corporation. They are both the sole directors of the corporation, and they are the sole shareholders of the corporation, each holding a 50% share in the business. The proposal is to transfer the existing seven-day, all-alcohol, Section 12 restaurant license with a 1:00 AM closing time from its current holder to this corporation, so that they can operate that restaurant. They will occupy the space, if approved, by virtue of a leasehold interest. The copy of the lease was provided as a supplement to the application. It's a five-year lease with three five-year options after that, for a potential total of 20 years. And as you can see by the lease, it gives them that much time. They are hopeful to make a long, long-term commitment to that location as restaurateurs. As I previously mentioned, they're existing restaurateurs. They operate an establishment on Washington Street in Somerville, called Tulum Mexican Cuisine Corporation. As each name success suggests, their restaurants principally serve Mexican and other Latin American fare. I was retained by these parties after the application had been prepared and submitted to the board, and as part of my review and preparation for the hearing, and in going through the application, I noticed what appeared to me, at least as a practitioner, to be some errors in the application, that I think would either be caught by this board, or ultimately caught by the ABCC, if granted at this level, and forwarded to ABCC for their review. If I may just run over those very quickly with the board, and if the board is inclined and would indulge me, I'd ask to submit corrected pages to the application. First, on page two of the application- First, on page two of the application, I noted that the parties failed to identify all of their positions within the corporation. Mr. Mongi is the president, the treasurer, a director, and a shareholder. Mr. Gonzalez is the vice president, secretary, director, and shareholder. But not all of those offices and positions are reflected in Page Two, Section Six of the agreement. It only reflects Mr. Mongi as the president and Mr. Gonzalez as the vice president. I think that that's something that either this board or the ABCC would pick up on, and even if neither did, in striving for accuracy, I would want to submit a corrected page there. The second error that came to my attention was on Page Three, Section 6A, where they disclose any interest in existing liquor licenses. I think they just, or whoever did that for them, just made a mistake. When they refer to license type and license name, they just put down liquor license, but that's not what that question seeks. The license type of their existing license at the sum of a location is a Section 12 restaurant license, so that should have been the answer in that box. And the name of the licensee, where they just put liquor license, that should reflect the name of the licensee, which is their other corporation and business, Tulum Mexican Cuisine Company. So I've prepared a page where those corrections are made. And finally, on Page Five of the application, in the financial disclosure section, Section Ten, they indicated that they were paying $100,000 as a purchase price for the business. But that, in my opinion at least, is not actually accurate. They're not buying a business or any business assets because there is no business currently operating there. What they're doing is entering into a long-term lease with the property owner, who is also the holder of the existing license at that location. And in consideration of their entry into that long-term lease, he is willing to transfer that license to them, provided it's approved at this level and at the state level. So they're not actually purchasing a business here because, again, there isn't anything to purchase. They are entering into a lease, and as part of that, the lessor is willing to transfer the license to them. The $100,000 figure is their estimate of what they'll spend to get the new location up and running, to make some cosmetic changes to the establishment, to fund initial startup costs, inventory, stock, new furniture, some new equipment, that sort of thing. But they're not buying any of that from the holder of the license, and they're not buying a business. So in my opinion, again, as a practitioner, it looked to be an error that probably would be picked up on either here or at ABCC because you can't say you're spending $100,000 to buy a business when you're not buying a business, you're using the $100,000 to do cosmetic build-outs and fund initial startup costs. So again, relatively minor, but we strive for accuracy on these things, and I know the ABCC can be fairly picky sometimes, and my expectation would be that they would pick up on that or want to know what was going on. So I felt if I can make the corrections at this level for this board, if it does get approved, it won't need to be addressed by an investigator at the ABCC going forward. The last- I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, Madam Chair. The last thing I, again, as a practitioner, and the board may have seen this, is that the proposed manager of this establishment, if the license is granted, is Mr. Mongi. He is currently the liquor license manager at their other location in Somerville. And in my experience, when someone is asking to be appointed the liquor license manager in more than one location, usually the local licensing authority and almost always the ABCC want some kind of explanation of how you're going to handle-
Split your time.
-being the manager in two separate locations. So I've prepared a little letter that was signed by Mr. Mongi, an explanatory letter, operational plan that I can submit to the board. But I can simply state the contents of the letter are that Mr. Mongi is the manager in the sum of a location. He's experienced, he's been running, they've both been running that restaurant for the better part of this year or the entirety of this calendar year. He's very well-versed now in the responsibilities and obligations of being a liquor license manager. And Mr. Gonzalez, because they're partners, and in that corporation, they are also all the statutorily required officers, both directors and the sole shareholders. They're 50/50 owners of that business as well. So they operate that restaurant together. They will operate this restaurant if it goes forward together. And Mr. Gonzalez works hand-in-hand with Mr. Mongi because they're partners on that restaurant and will be partners on this restaurant, and frankly, could be a manager in his own right, but he is not at present a U.S. citizen. That's the only thing preventing him from making application to be the manager. So anytime Mr. Mongi is not at one location, Mr. Gonzalez will be at that location. And again, he has frankly the same experience level as Mr. Mongi. He just doesn't have the benefit of the title of liquor license manager because he can't be one by virtue of not being yet a citizen of the United States. So that's the explanation to both the board here and to ABCC. What's going to happen when Mr. Mongi is in one place, Mr. Gonzalez will be in the other to pick up the slack and vice versa. And Mr. Mongi, if this license is granted, will obviously be devoting, at least initially, most of his time to the new establishment. It'll be brand-new, and they'll want to get it up and running and hopefully become successful. And that's going to mean that Mr. Gonzalez is probably going to have a bigger role at the Somerville location. But we're dealing with two well-experienced people, and, you know, they're interchangeable in that respect. And again, the only reason Mr. Gonzalez can't be a manager is due to his citizenship status, basically. To get into the actual petition, again, a corporate Massachusetts corporation of which these gentlemen are the sole officers, directors, and shareholders. They intend to occupy the property pursuant to a long-term lease, which could give them as much as 20 years at that location. Those five-year options are at their option. So if things are going good, the expectation is that they'll stay there. They'd like to be there for 20 years. They are not buying an existing business because there is no existing business. They are entering into a long-term lease with the lessor, and in consideration of that, the lessor is willing to transfer the lease, the license to them essentially at no cost. And the $100,000 you see reflected on the application is for build-out, cosmetic improvement, startup cost, inventory, et cetera. Mr. Mongi is the proposed manager. As I said, he is already a licensed manager at a location here in the Commonwealth in Somerville at their other establishment. He's been the manager at that location for 10 and a half months at this point in time, or nine and a half months, excuse me, since January of this year. There have been no problems at that Somerville location, no discipline of any kind in the business. I'm informed it's running very smoothly. He would act as the manager here, but backed up, as I mentioned, by Mr. Gonzalez, who has the same level of experience but can't claim the moniker of manager due to his citizenship status at this point in time. They're both here, obviously, and are happy to address any concerns or questions that the board has, but we think it's a strong application, and we're asking the board to act favorably on it. Thank you.
Selectman Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you very much for the information. I appreciate it. I was actually going to ask that same question about having, if one was the manager elsewhere versus, because we have had that concern come up before. So I guess my question is to both applicants, how long is your experience in the restaurant business? It sounds like you've only been running the one in Somerville for the better part of this year, or for all of this calendar year, but how long have you been in the restaurant business per se?
So I've been in the restaurant industry for 15 years. I started as a buster, went up to a server, barback, bartender, pretty much everything. I worked in Casa Amaro in Back Bay, Stephanie's on Newbury, Amuleto in Waltham, and I finally, thank God, and family and friend, my friend Paul, we decided to open our own restaurant now.
I'm Paul Mongi. My address is 271 Reservoir Ave. Riviere. I've been in the restaurant for about four years. Me and my mother, we opened a restaurant in Cambridge about four years ago, and since then, I started gaining experience in the restaurant industry. And I did almost pretty much everything there, dishwasher, cook. Then, once we got the liquor license, I started doing bartending, server, pretty much everything in the restaurant. And yeah, that's pretty much.
So do you still have a restaurant in Cambridge?
That's actually my mother's. It's still running, but I already have someone else doing my work over there, so I'm pretty much.
As you can imagine, you're on a very busy road with a lot of action going on. My only concern is the fact that I'm not worried about Somerville, to be honest. I'm worried about Saugus, and I would just want to make sure, no offense to you, sir, but he's the manager on the liquor license, not you. And I know you're equal partners, but that means nothing in the eyes of the ABCC. It's the person that's responsible for the license that has the ultimate authority. So we would need assurance from you that your time is going to be spent in Saugus, and whatever that means for Somerville, it means for Somerville, but it hasn't been open that long. That's my concern. You know, Somerville's been open less than a year or a year. This one's a new establishment. It's going to need a lot of time, energy, and effort. You're changing the whole makeup or cuisine that's there, so it's not going to have a following necessarily because it's not like they were serving Mexican there prior. And there's already Mexican competition on Route One. So I just, I personally would like to see some type of a guarantee, at least on the onset of this thing while it's ramping up. You, as manager, should have presence on a daily basis in the establishment, not splitting your time. If you want to go there for a portion of the day, that's one thing, but Saugus really needs your attention as the manager. That's, to me, that's a non-negotiable.
Yeah, for sure. That's my plan. That's our plan, to be there seven days a week, actually.
Yeah, and one other thing that I wanted to mention, in my tenure on the board for 10 years, I've never, Mr. Manager, this is really, Madam Chair threw you, so I've never had a situation where a liquor license transfer happens or is assumed through a lease of an establishment with no formal documentation stating what the ramifications are of this if there's a violation of said liquor license. So right now, the attorney, I'm sorry, sir, I forget your name.
It's Patrick McDonald.
Attorney McDonald stated that, and in the letter, it says that the transfer occurred not by sale but by execution of the lease agreement for the establishment, but the lease agreement, from what I see, does not specify anything about a liquor license. There's no formal documented agreement for a liquor license. So how would that pass through the ABCC if there's no documentation? They're basically using the license.
Yeah, I think it's problematic. Whoever is the holder has to hold that license, and it's their asset. We generally here have never allowed pledges or any kind of leverage on a liquor license because if there's an issue, then who are you, you know, who are you imposing penalty on who's responsible with that liquor license?
So I'm even thinking from the landlord's perspective. Let's say that, it probably won't happen, but let's say that they run into financial difficulties, they don't pay the rent. If we transfer this license in their name, what recovery rights does the landlord have to pull that license back if we transfer it into his name as manager?
Well, I think that's part of the problem with having any kind of pledge, our financial issue. They're generally not allowed against a liquor license because of that, what you just said, because then it becomes problematic of who's holding the license, who's the owner, because it is an asset, and then you run into issues if you revoke it, and, you know, now you're going to be in court.
I just questioned it because I'm not sure the ABCC would sign off on it either. You know, I could see that as a roadblock for you when this goes to the ABCC.
When we've had the pledges, they've worked around that and restructured it so that there was an actual transfer.
You would need some type of an agreement.
This is a little different.
They don't even have an agreement for the liquor license right now.
They probably have one, they're just not showing it.
Do you have an agreement?
There is an agreement in the lease that says that if we were to, like, close the business down or anything, we have to return the liquor license to the current owner.
You can't, that's not allowed.
Yeah, but I don't even see, I don't even see where-
Can't have leverage on a liquor license that returns to somebody that doesn't have it.
I don't even see where it says that. I only scanned this, it was online when I had it electronic, but I scanned it, I did a search. I didn't see anything that said about returning a liquor license.
If I may, member, Page 18 of the lease.
The clause itself is not allowable, so you can't have a lease or an agreement that the liquor license would revert back to somebody that has ownership, basically.
But the lease doesn't actually say that. What the lease says that in the event of termination for any reason, that the holder, which if granted would be these people, will cooperate in getting the lease back to the landlord. But if the license is in their corporation's name, the only way that license gets back to, or gets to anyone else is through a transfer process, just like we're doing right here. So there's no automatic reversion to the lessor, because the town manager is correct. You just can't have a license automatically revert. Once it's been transferred to someone, the only way for it to get in the hands of another individual or entity is to go through a subsequent transfer process, and that's what would need to occur at that point in time.
But typically, what happens when we have a transfer of a lease, there's a sale. Money exchanges hands. This is more, this is somehow embedded in a lease document that, almost like a pledge, which is not allowed, that the ABCC would, there'd be all sorts of red flags.
It's almost a financial license to use the liquor license.
Yeah. Like, believe me, we want you to open. We want to give you the tools to make it successful. I'm just, this is something, we have had a lot of liquor licenses come through this board, ones issued from us that we had on hand, ones that were sold and transferred, ones that were pocket licenses that were revoked and then subsequently sold. I have never seen a situation where, for no sum certain, and only for executing a lease for a property, along with that lease, there's no mention of the actual liquor license other than tenant shall cooperate in the return of the license at the end of the lease term, whether extended or not, or in the event that the lease terminates for any reason. So.
You need an agreement that's actually transferring the license that you're looking at, that you're voting on.
That's what I'm used to, and that's what I think the ABCC is going to want. There has to be some type of a documented special agreement for that license itself, not just mentioning it in a lease.
That actually affects the way it's a transfer.
I don't disagree with that, and it doesn't necessarily need to be for money. You don't have to charge someone for a liquor license. You can just agree to-
Right, you can charge a dollar or whatever.
Right, for one dollar. If I may make a suggestion, I certainly could and would suggest to my clients that perhaps the landlord can be approached to sign a very basic document in the nature of a purchase and sale agreement, but only for a dollar. He's welcome to keep his lease in place.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Could you contact the ABCC to make sure what exactly they want documented-
Sure.
-for approval? Because if the ABCC is good with it, I'm pretty sure the town of Saugus is going to be good with it.
Well, here's, Madam Chair, if I could.
Of course.
Is Kevin Yee still the owner of Record?
Yes.
Okay, so I've been in the alcohol business for a long time. They're never going to approve someone at two different locations with the same name. A manager of Record has to be at a location for 40 hours, so they won't approve you if you're at two different locations. So if you have a GM in Somerville, you should put the GM on that license. Second issue I have is, and you raised it, I can't imagine Kevin Yee coming here and allowing to sell that license for a dollar, because now, if the place fails, you own it, and you just lost a liquor license. So a liquor license is worth a minimum of $100,000 in Saugus, a minimum, and we still have a couple left, but no one is selling a liquor license in this town for under $100 grand. So to get Kevin to agree to something like that, I don't believe that's going to happen. When you said you got this license basically for putting up $100, I would have bought it. You know, I just, I can't see that that is something that Kevin would allow.
We've had licenses sell almost up to $300,000.
Yeah, absolutely. So to sell it for a dollar, listen, and the last thing I want to see is an empty place on Route One. That's why I told you to go for dance and get everything, because I want to see our businesses thrive. I want to see you two gentlemen make a success here and be here for the duration of the 20 years, but I don't see that that is going- But I don't see that that is going to happen. I can't see any person who owns a liquor license selling it for a dollar or writing up a documentation that it's going to sell for a dollar, because now it's yours. And he loses that money.
Structurally, I think, like, both Selectman Colgiano and Selectman Chicalini, I think good advice would be, so that they can approve it. Everybody wants a restaurant, a viable restaurant, to be able to serve liquor and occupy there, would be to work with the owner and the ABCC. And you can even contact my office if you want, and I can run it by our outside counsel to, so you have some kind of structure that's going to be something that's acceptable to the board and to the ABCC so they can approve it.
Selectman Chicalini.
To Mr. Manager and Attorney McDonald, I think one other thing that you might want to ask the ABCC if it's allowed, is if you do purchase the license and you enter into a specific agreement with Kevin Ye, perhaps you can offer a first right of refusal at the same stated price. So, if there is some type of a violation or termination of the lease or whatever, it triggers a clause that would allow a first right of refusal for the same price as they acquired it for.
That might work.
That might work. I'm not an attorney, I don't claim to be an attorney, but it's just, because we're thinking of the lessor. You as lessy, yeah, that makes sense, but to Selectman Colgiano's point, I'm thinking of the lessor. Why would he put in writing, "I'm giving you this license for a dollar, $10, $50," and assume all the risk? Because if the business fails, now he has no recourse to that license. But if you could put it in an agreement where, if you fail and you close, he automatically gets a first right of refusal to purchase it back at the same price.
And additionally, what happens, and not to get this complicated, but we've had tons of liquor things that have happened here in 30 years. But if somebody has an interest in the liquor license, this is why it's not allowed. In the board, and you guys, as, on the paper, holders of that license, and there's a violation or an issue, and the board revokes the license, you have a third party now, all of a sudden showing up with a document saying they have an interest in it, and now there's court proceedings that the town's going to pay and deal with because someone else has some sort of interest in the license. So, that's why it's generally, those aren't, you know, they don't pass muster with the board or the ABCC. But I think there's a way to structure it. I think, not on TV, but I think you need to talk to the owner, talk to the ABCC, and then run something, you want to present it to the board, what you have, and I can look at it on my end of it and see that it's acceptable.
And we can continue.
Right.
The hearing tonight, so that you don't have to, you know...
Republish and...
Yeah, we can continue it.
What we could do is, we could continue it to when you're ready. Instead of putting it a particular date, once you feel comfortable and you spoke with the ABCC and you met with the owner, and you have something structural, and you speak with the town manager, you could call Meredith back, and we could continue that hearing until that date. So, we're not going to like, we're not going to say, "Well, November 5th, November 19th."
It'll be to the call of the chair, once everything's squared away.
To the call of the chair, so whenever you're ready, we'll put you on the net. We'll have to, yeah, we'll advertise, we don't have to advertise it, we'll just put it on the agenda.
That's, well, first of all, we appreciate the graciousness of the board, and I think my clients are more than happy to try and do that. I will reach out to ABCC, see if I can get some guidance from them. I take issue with, one statement you may remember, I've had several liquor licenses approved where a manager was, was the same manager at multiple locations. They just wanted to see a plan. What's the plan? I, you know, ABCC is ABCC and local licensing authorities are local licensing authorities. You may not like the plan, but I just wanted to state for the record that I've personally had them go through with ABCC as long as I could give them an...
They may not have caught that, but, I mean, generally, I think the way it reads is that they have to be on premises, because they're the ones that are responsible for the liquor being served for 40 hours.
Supposed to be 40 hours a week.
I thought it was at least 40 hours a week.
They need to be full-time, no question about that.
The other thing I would add, and I don't know if you've done this, but you should definitely obtain, because part of when you come here and ask for a transfer is that you have read and understand the local rules and liquor rules and regulations.
Sure.
If you don't have a copy of that, I would suggest getting that, because we have our own rules and regulations that may be more stringent and may have language in there that they, the board has to adhere to.
Sure.
Regarding the 40 hours.
Just one follow-up comment to you. The last, I believe the last license this board voted on a transfer because of a paper trail foul up, they've been waiting five months from the ABCC. So, if the paperwork isn't in order, they'll hold it up.
Even when it's in order, you can wait months and months and months with ABCC.
Yeah. And believe me, I'm the last person who's going to want to hold up any business.
No, no.
I hope you guys get in there and do gangbusters, I really do. And I just want to make sure it's done right.
Sure.
And I've never, like I said, I've been on this board a long time. I've never seen the Saugus Board of Selectmen approve a liquor license with a contingency on it.
Right.
That was pledged back.
No.
So, again, I'm not saying I necessarily have a problem with it, but I've never seen a board vote for a pledge on a liquor license.
It's clearly unconventional, that's for sure. And I will reach out to ABCC, I'll get whatever guidance they can offer on it. And when I've obtained that information, my clients have had an opportunity, naturally, they're going to have to speak to the owner or the holder of the license right now. He needs to, there are two parties to the transaction, he's going to need to be on board with however we...
And he's a holder of another license in town as well, so, you know, he's running an active restaurant currently as well.
Good.
So, you know, he has a great standing with the town. It's, so that's, you know, we want to help as much as we can.
Sure.
But we have to abide by the rules, you know?
And if you want to reach out, we'll get a copy of our rules and regulations, as well as, I'm happy to help, you know, give you some ideas of structuring it.
We will, we will.
There's a way to do it, you just have to do it, you know, so we cross all the Ts and Is.
And when we're better informed and we've had an opportunity to coordinate with the seller or the holder, we'll reach out to the clerk for the board about getting back on an agenda as quickly as possible. And we appreciate the board's willingness to table the matter until then, to give us the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, we're going to continue the hearing. Somebody's going to make that in the form of a...
Somerville, Chief.
Okay. And so, we have a motion by Selectman Colgiano.
Madam Chairman, just speaking on the motion, I agree with my colleagues. You really need to get in touch with the ABCC about what you want to do with the liquor license and the management. They should be on the premise 40 hours a week.
Yes.
But I agree with my colleagues and the town manager. Thank you.
So, we do have a motion to continue the hearing. I just want to ask, and before I second it, did you two residents like to speak?
No.
Okay. Well, you've been sitting here the whole time, I just wanted to make sure.
I did.
Okay. We, out of courtesy, because you've been sitting here the whole night, I just, we just wanted to make sure that you didn't want to speak. Okay, so, so we have a motion to continue this hearing to the call of the chair, that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Colgiano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I...
Yes, Selectman Colgiano.
Corrected pages to the application.
I'm sorry?
May I submit the corrected pages to the application?
Yes, if you could, yes, if you could please just give those to Meredith. Selectman Colgiano?
Yeah, class for two-minute recess.
Of course you can. And that's seconded by the chair. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Colgiano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Two-minute recess. Good evening. We are now back in session. The next item on the agenda is the town manager's report. Mr. Town Manager.
Good evening. I know we've had a little bit of a long night. Just want to go over some public announcements and some different events and things that might be important to the residents of Saugus that they could take advantage of. We have the Fall Curbside Leaf Collection, that's coming up, and that will be starting Monday, October 28th to Friday, November 1st. And then, there'll be a one day, and then the next week, we're going to do Tuesday, November 12th, because of the holiday, to Saturday, November 16th. And that week, we'll have the one-day delay because of the Monday holiday. And then, Monday, December 2nd to Friday, December 6th, would be the third week that we're doing it. And we just encourage residents, they can dispose of leaves, curbside, on their regularly scheduled collection day between Monday and Friday on these dates. Leaves should be left outside at the curb by 7:00 a.m. I think that's important, because you don't know what time they're going to come, because it's obviously a different type of schedule. So, 7:00 a.m. on the appropriate days. And please ensure that the leaf containers are physically separated from trash and recycling. Paper leaf bags are the preferred method of leaf disposal. If using barrels, however, they must be clearly marked with yard waste stickers. Yard waste stickers, which are free, may be obtained at inspectional services at the lower level at Saugus Town Hall or the Saugus Department of Public Works. And what they're asking is if using barrels to keep the covers would need to be removed so that the leaves are visible. Plastic bags, cardboard boxes, branches, and brush will not be accepted. Please note that separate trucks that collect the rubbish, recycling leaves, so the leaves may be collected at a different time of that day. And if you have any questions, just please contact the recycling department at 781-231-4036. And please, there'll be no calls about saying, "You forgot to put it out, we got to go back." This is sort of a one-shot deal, so please be aware of that, so we can get all the leaves that we need collected. So, that's one announcement. The second is, important as well, is the, we're going to be holding a free COVID-19 flu clinic, so that you'll be able to obtain either the COVID-19 vaccination or a flu vaccination. And that's open to the entire residents of Saugus. We're going to have it here at Town Hall. And that is on Wednesday, October 23rd, at 11:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. at Saugus Town Hall, so that anybody from Saugus can come, you don't need insurance. But if you have insurance, please bring your insurance card. So, again, you can get the COVID-19 or the flu shot. Must be a Saugus resident, but any, everybody, and anybody that's a resident of Saugus is invited and welcome. I think Walgreens, we've partnered with them, and I believe that they're the ones that are, will be administering the vaccines. And one other one we have is, the town is hosting a Household Hazardous Waste Day, and this is going to be on, Household Hazardous Waste is going to be on Saturday, October 26th. All this stuff is on our website. We've also submitted things out to the newspaper and put it on some of the social media. So, whatever you can do to share, that would be great. Saturday, October 26th, 9:00 a.m. to noon, and that's at the Belmonte Steam Academy, 25 Dow Street. And there's a list online of the things that you're able to discard. Household hazardous waste, which is like acids, art supplies, aerosol cans, batteries, chemistry sets, fiberglass resins, furniture floor metal polishers and strippers, mercury containing devices, a whole bunch of list of stuff, wood preservative stains, all that good stuff. And if you have questions about that, same thing, call the recycling coordinator, trash and recycling department, and they can help inform you, you can look online. We're also, I'm not sure, I think we're just putting it up, or it might have just went up, or we're putting it up tomorrow, but we're also going to be hosting a shredded day again for the residents. That's been real popular. We had it, I think, earlier this year, and had a ton of people to bring things out to shred, and I'll have more information on that, I think, tomorrow. But that's going to be November 2nd, and that'll be up at the DPW from 8:00 to 12:00. And that's what we call Saugus Shredding Day. And look for that. Some other, I guess, fun things for the kids is that we're hosting here at Saugus Town Hall, a trick-or-treat event, and that is actually going to be on Halloween. So, we're encouraging, we're going to be opening up the Saugus Town Hall for all the children on Halloween for a special trick-or-treat event. Saugus children and their parents, guardians, caretakers are invited to stop by Saugus Town Hall Thursday, October 31st, which is the Halloween celebrated that day, from 2:30 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. 2:30 to 4:00. You can come to all the offices and trick-or-treat, and they can get a little treat there. And the employees will be handing out candy and assorted treats, and everybody in town is, and Town Hall is looking forward, I think, to dressing up and entertaining and being able to give some treats out to the kids of Saugus. So, please come. I think that'll be a good event. We generally have that, but it's not at this scale, so we're hoping to get a large turnout. If not, we're going to have a lot of extra candy. It'll last a couple of years, probably. So, please come. And I think that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Do board members have any questions for the Town Manager?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Riley.
Through to the Town Manager, I just want to say how that, the street hockey rink is coming along so well. I once saw it, and it's, everyone's excited about it, and I know they're waiting to use it.
Yeah, it's awesome. They actually painted the pickleball courts yesterday.
Oh.
So, we have the pickleballs, and I think that they leveled out a little bit with the boards. And I think they're painting maybe tomorrow, the, for the, the street hockey court itself. And I think we talked about that we had a little bit of a change order, which is fine. We prepared for that, but we've replaced all the drain, we had like a 15-inch, we went to an 18-inch drain pipe underneath that's all connected in. We replaced some other drain pipes that were there, so we're trying to work on some of the stormwater drains that were collapsed and corroded. So, I think that this will hopefully make it so that we can, it'll last for the next 50 years. So, it's, you know, that's a good part of it. The lights are up, and we've actually upgraded some of the electrical, working with the soccer folks and helping them with their, with their controls for the sprinkler systems and all that. So, this will be, I think, good. We're moving along pretty quick. We might have some deliverables that might come in a little later, but I think we'll be looking at substantial completion soon. So, things are moving pretty quickly now.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chairman, just one quick question of the manager. I went to the Board of Health meeting last week. They were talking about the air monitors.
Yep.
And the guy representing the DEP from the state said that they were looking at installation of, you know, the ability to install the air monitors at the location they chose. I was wondering, I know most of the neighborhood wanted to do it at the end of Bristol Street. You were down there.
Yep.
And you mentioned that the town would help out. Have they contacted you at all?
They haven't, but, I mean, I mean, they were pretty, I think, thrilled that, when I said, you know, "We'll do whatever you need, help, just let us know." They haven't reached out. I can find out what the contact is, and maybe through the Board of Health, reach out to them and see if they need, did they pick an actual location?
No, they didn't pick a location.
Okay. So, they were looking at like two different locations, right?
Two, Ballard Street or the end of Bristol Street.
Okay.
The two locations that they recommended. He said they were still looking at the logistics of installing the equipment at them.
Okay, because they have to fence it in or something, right?
Yeah.
So, I haven't heard, but I can reach out. If I don't hear by next week, maybe reach out and just see where they're at, and find out, you know, whatever they need, where, you know, I think, hopefully, they'll pick a site soon.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
They were the same two sites that we all went down and saw.
Right.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes, September 24th, 2024, the 7:00 p.m. meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Some move, Madam Chairman. I want a motion to approve.
To approve. And that's seconded by the chair.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Selectman Cogliano.
One correction on the minutes.
Yes.
On page three, it says Attorney Richard Magnum. It's Richard Magnin.
There are a few little typos that I gave to Meredith, so, is there anything else that you saw?
That's it, thank you.
All right, very good. That is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Motion.
And we have four approval, one abstention. Thank you. Next, we have appointments. We have Michael Sullivan, and he's requesting a reappointment to the Board of Trustees of the Saugus Public Library. His term actually expired March 31st, 2024. It's a three-year term, so to extend it, we go out to March 31st, 2027.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Riley.
Make a motion to approve Mike Sullivan's request for a reappointment to the Board of Trustees of the Saugus Public Library, term ending 3/31/27.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero, and thank you to Mr. Sullivan. The next item on the agenda are citizens' comments. I don't think anyone's going to be stepping up, since there's no one left. The final item on the agenda before adjournment is members' comments. And Selectman Riley, I'd like to start with you, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have to, just to remind everyone that the election is November 5th, and please exercise your right to vote and get to the polls. The Veterans Council is currently planning the town's Veterans Day celebration, and it will be held at the Veterans Park on November 11th at the 11th hour, and hope to see everybody there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to extend condolences from the board to the family of Bill James. Bill was a former standout wrestler and wrestling coach at Saugus High School. He passed away this week. So, condolences to the family. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Selectman Serino?
Madam Chairman, I received an email from Brian Kane. Kane, he's the MBTA Executive Director of the Advisory Board, and there's an election up for the MPO, and he wants, you know, he wanted, one of the chief executive officers supposed to vote on it, but the board appoints me to the MBTA, they're organizing the election. And I just wanted, before I send anything back to him, I can do it electronically, I just wanted to get permission from the board on the two uncontested seats for the Three Rivers Interlocal Council seats, the Town of Norwood, Mr. Donley, he's the select board chair, and the Northern Suburban Planning Council seat from the Town of Burlington, Joseph Mirandi, he's the select board chair, he's unopposed. And the only contested election is the Boston MPO seat, and we have three contestants, the At-Lodge, the Mayor of Newton, the Mayor of Chelsea, and the Town of Arlington, and I didn't know how the board wanted to proceed on that. I, my opinion is, I think we should have put, vote for the Town of Arlington, because they're more in line with the town of Saugus issues, like town issues versus city issues. But whatever the board wants to do, and I can email this and...
Do board members have any comments on this? I mean, we did vote for Selectman Serino to be our MBTA rep, so I feel comfortable with whatever he decides. Do you want us to make that in the form of a motion? All right, so, that is your motion, is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Serino's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. That's it, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Selectman Serino. Our board was invited to the Senior Centers Annual Halloween Party on Tuesday, October 29th at 11:30. If residents are interested in attending, I would get your tickets quickly, because typically, this is a very popular event. Secondly, a quick thank you to the Town Manager and Lieutenant Connors for the number of follow-ups concerning traffic. Please know that the school committee is working with our police department on the issues surrounding drop-offs and pickups. We've gotten a lot of people commenting on them, not just on Facebook, but calling and emailing the board, and we're trying to work on that. I did talk with the chairman of the school committee last week. A big shout-out to Sue Palumbo, who is being honored this evening by the Elks for being Woman of the Year. We were all planning on going to see Sue, thinking that the meeting wasn't going to go this long, but congratulations to Sue from the full board of selectmen and our town manager.
Madam Chairman, I just want to add, I think, the, it's nice to be back in the auditorium, but we've, we've completed the painting, at least that phase of doing the painting, and it looks, you know, fantastic. We've done the floors, we do still have stuff that we're working on to complete, to do some renovations up here. One is looking at shades, new shades throughout the whole building, as well as trying to look at the acoustics. So, I'm trying to maybe, you know, get somebody in that can help with the positioning of the speakers, so that we can think here a little better, and we're going to upgrade some of the chairs that you guys have there.
It's beautiful.
Thank you, it looks great.
It does, it looks great.
Thank you.
Once it's complete, then we can kind of think, but we've still got a few more things that we're trying to do, so.
Bike to the Sea is having its annual meeting at K-Pub in Saugus on Sunday, November 10th, from 6:00 to 8:30. If you're interested, you can get tickets by going to biketothec.org. Just a reminder that the Knights of Columbus is having the Indoor Flea Market this Saturday, October 19th, from 9:00 to 3:00. It'll be held at the Knights of Columbus Hall at 57 Appleton Street, it's always a fun time. The Wreaths Across America Ceremony will be held at the Riverside Cemetery on Saturday, December 14th at 12:00 p.m. Of course, the board members are invited, as well as anybody who is interested, it's usually a beautiful event. Tonight, the Saugus Business Education Collaborative sponsored a trivia night where all the funds raised go back to the Saugus schools. It was held at the Cowlone, and I want to thank the SBC and all the board members, including Anthony, who's also on the board. Selectman Riley and I were discussing bringing in the Continental to thank them for 72 years of service here in Saugus, so maybe that's something that we want to do in the months to come. And lastly, as a reminder, our November 5th meeting will be held at 6:00 p.m. due to it being Election Day. Voting closes at 8:00 p.m., and then all the ballots come back to Town Hall, so we need to be adjourned by 8:00 o'clock. And that is all I have for this evening. If somebody would like to offer a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chairman?
And that's seconded by the chair. All those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. We are adjourned for the evening. Hope everybody has a wonderful evening. Good night.
Good night.
(end of transcript)